You ready?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone, and we'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, June the 26th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the Russell County Government Center. I first like to start off with a call of order in roll call. Tim Lovelace.
Here.
David Eaton. David Eaton will be calling in into the order by roll call.
Yeah, what?
Hey, David, how are you, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
How are you? I've got you on the line, and when I go through, you have to state your name, where you're at, and the reason for the calling, and the board will have to make a motion pursuant to subsection 2.23708.3, and then we'll make you eligible to attend and vote.
Okay.
David Eaton.
Yeah, this is David Eaton, and I'm in Charleston, South Carolina.
Okay. Carl Ray.
Here.
Yeah. David, did you say you was on vacation?
Yes.
Okay. Steve Breeding.
Here.
Rebecca Dye.
Here.
Horace Christian.
Present.
And Luann Wallace.
Here.
Luann, Ms. Wallace, you have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today. Forgive us for where we fail you each and every day, and thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government. Lead, God, and direct us, and help us be more like you in each and every way. In your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I need an approval of the agenda, please.
And Chair, I make the motion, we approve the agenda.
As amended with the added addition, please, Mr. Breeding.
With the amended addition.
Okay, and do we need to read that? The amended addition to the motion to allow Mr. Eaton to participate and vote pursuant to the code read by Lonzo? I'll take it then, sorry, Steve.
I'll amend the motion to allow Mr. Eaton to participate remotely and to vote pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3708.3.
And the policy adopted by the county?
And the policy adopted by the county.
I will second that.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. So we've had the approval of the agenda. At this time, we'll have our public hearing, and this is the Russell County Fiscal Year 2023-24 Countywide Budget. Anybody sign up?
No one. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm Charlie Hess of District 6. I hear a lot of complaints about the, I call them trash dumps, Mr. Lester refers to them as convenience centers, but if they're closed and somebody goes by to empty their trash, they're not convenient, and I'd like to see the board work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. We all agree. Anyone else? Mr. Lester, it's all yours.
Well, the first upon, next on the agenda is Ms. Cheryl Robinett. She is with the Russell County Recovery, the OPIET Program Grant Application. That's before you in your package. She's going to come up and speak to you about the application for the Russell County Recovery.
Well, first of all, thank you all for this opportunity. I'm not really sure what I'm, what you want to hear, so I thought if it's okay with you, I would tell you how this got started. I know that Robbie Adams, who's there on the Board of Directors, prepared, we prepared the application that came in, and so we're requesting $26,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30th and $111,200 for fiscal year '24. How this came about, and why we're also requesting this is because to date, 100% of the residents that we have admitted to the two programs that we operate have had demonstrated financial hardship, and we, and I have a snapshot in there taken of a census on May the 25th that shows really the majority of them are now employed and they are paying the fees. So this is a program where it's expected that they pay fees to, in order to live there. But I wanted to show and point that out because I felt like that also is a, helps support the need for this type of program for Russell County. But to go back a little bit as to how this happened, as you all know, far southwest Virginia is the epicenter of the OxyContin epidemic, and it really dates back that far. And that was in the early, that was in the late 1990s, early 2000s, when the medical, chief medical examiner for Virginia and the Virginia State Police started realizing that there was something going on in far southwest Virginia due to the significant increase in overdose deaths. And then, as other things that were found was an explosion for the criminal justice system with the judicial system, with probation, the dockets, social services, all of our community partners or stakeholders in our communities were being affected by that. And with the OxyContin epidemic, it then led into the opioid epidemic, which then led to the prescription drug epidemic, which has, and then has led to the, what is now referred to as the addiction epidemic, and that was coined by, at the time, the gentleman, the Commissioner for the Virginia Department of Health, who said, "We've gone through OxyContin and other opiates prescription drugs, and now it's a case of addiction." It's the, addiction is actually the epidemic that we're facing. Also, it's a public health crisis. We not only had a significant increase in overdose deaths, but also accidental overdoses, children being placed in foster care or adopted as a result of parental issues. It is, we had such significant increases with the rates of hepatitis A, B, and C, but specifically hepatitis C, that it was called an epidemic in far southwest Virginia for not just Russell County, but our surrounding counties. And I usually am representing far southwest Virginia as a whole, and Russell County's been, of course, right in the middle of this. Also, such a significant increase in IV drug use. So the list goes on and on as to how things started back in the 1990s and where it's brought us today. What, in my work prior to retirement, I can tell you that Russell County was always at the head of trying to identify solutions. I worked for a public agency that was tasked with finding ways to address this epidemic, but coming at it from a treatment perspective, but also from supportive services. And Russell County was always in the forefront for far southwest Virginia in saying, "There is a problem, you know, we're admitting there's a problem, what can we do about it?" And as a result of your all's continued interest and being so proactive in it, along with some other stakeholders like the CSVs, DBHDS, who oversees the CSVs, drug courts became, they're actually, they are a direct result of the original OxyContin epidemic. Also, District 43 adult probation is a direct result of the OxyContin epidemic due to that. The 29th Circuit got an additional judge as a result of that. But with the partnership of Russell County, DBHDS, drug courts, and Dr. Hughes Melton, who was very active in all of this as well, we continuously sought resources, programming, anything that we could bring to far southwest Virginia. And I go back to, Russell County was always right in the thick of it in saying that there's a problem, we need to do something, and we're going to be supportive of that. So, early on, we identified that one of the hugest gaps in all of this, because treatment has a continuum of care, we had the recovery community, but the hu, the biggest gap that we had was recovery housing or sober housing. We, this epidemic became multi-generational, so we would have individuals who did not have a home that was stable or drug-free to return to. And this, of course, created an impact on probation, the judicial system, the prison system, Department of Corrections in general, social services, you name it, there, it's, it just continued in its far reach. So one of the biggest gaps was where can people live if they were going to work on recovery if they did not have a stable, safe home to go home to? And early on, drug courts also recognized that, because a lot of people may not know it, Mr. Lester does, drug court, with the help of the Supreme Court, tried several years ago to establish a regional drug court, which would be an actual program located in Lebanon, because that's where we looked and found a potential property that would serve as a residential drug court program. It would have been the first in the state if we had been able to successfully get funding for that. And it was to recognize that there were individuals who could not participate in drug court because they did not have a place to live. They did not have a safe, stable home to live in, and they couldn't go back, some, a lot of them could not go back to the homes that, go back to family. So drug courts also, early on, and there was a partnership here with our local government, with the Supreme Court, with treatment, to try to fill that void, tackling and targeting people who were appropriate for drug courts. We did not get funding for that, although I will say, at the time, the Secretary Hazel, Secretary of Health and Human Resources, through two governorships, took a special interest in southwest Virginia and tried, you know, to move resources down here and also supported that. It just did not get through at that time. So we continued to brainstorm, and there are individuals actually in this room that stuck with us in trying to find a way to, you know, address the gap. And one of those was, how can we get recovery housing? So we, I wrote a proposal to DBHDS, asking their Office of Recovery Oriented Services to fund bringing down a consultant to meet here in Russell County to discuss, to talk, educate us about what recovery residences were, how you would get them started, how you would maintain them, their purpose. And the lady that came down was Sandy Canille. We were successful in getting the grant approved by DBHDS to bring her down as, to service a consultant for Russell County. And she is a statewide consultant on this because of the success of her programs in Lynchburg. And there was also interest in trying to replicate this in a rural community, because Lynchburg is obviously more urban there. So we were successful, she came down on October the 30th of 2019. We had 50 representatives from Russell County community, which also included people from Richmond who came down because of their interest in supporting this, and we had a work group, everything was going to go forward, and then COVID hit, and it put everything on hold. So when the opportunity came for funding to go to VAR, which is the Virginia Association for Recovery Residences, we were actually the first county that they picked to do, to fund, because they too wanted to see, help us, help them develop a rural model, but because they knew how long Russell County had really worked to try to get this service and get it established in the county. So we were very fortunate in that they were going to fund us for three years to get the program up and running and be able to sustain itself. And the project design was to open a men's recovery residence, a women's recovery residence, and a community resource center, and we were successful in doing all three of those things. Our Board of Directors was established, we are incorporated, we're also a recognized nonprofit, and those were goals that we had to do, you know, to meet the spirit of the funding. We opened a 20-bed facility for men here in Lebanon, also an eight-bed facility for women. We accepted our first admission on July the 24th. We receive referrals from treatment, probation, drug courts, social services, individuals in the community, self-referrals, local government. Referrals have been nonstop since because we are the only, this was the only county that had recovery residences, although the plan is to try to do this in every county, but with Russell County taking the lead to help develop the model for replication in other rural counties. So when we were preparing the application, we prepared a snapshot of the program, and we chose May the 25th. On May the 25th, and I believe that snapshot was included, it showed that we were at capacity, we had a waiting list. We were targeting primarily, in this, tying into the opioid abatement, in this community, even though individuals may now be abusing meth or other substances, the overwhelming majority either have a primary diagnosis of opioid addiction, or they have a secondary diagnosis and are being treated for that, even though their current drug of choice may be methamphetamines or benzos or whatever. So this goes back, it's, it hasn't gone away, the impact of the original OxyContin epidemic. So with that, we have served two pregnant women. We have a history among that snapshot of residents there, and you can see that there's an age range from 18 to about 55. We are serving diverse communities, a history of heroin use, fentanyl use. We have 13 on that day that were in medication-assisted treatment. Recovery homes are not treatment programs, and that was the thing that also made these type of, this type of program indifferent, in that no treatment is being provided in the program. You link those, you link individuals who need treatment to the community providers, and that has been done. So we're utilizing, you know, our community resources from the time they come in until the time that they leave. We have served drug court participants, probation participants, people have been diverted from incarceration, which helps your days at the regional jail. We've had, on that one day, for instance, we had a census that had 95% of a history of IV drug use, 75% with co-occurring mental health, 14 with co-occurring physical health. We have linked people to not only treatment for the addiction, but also for their health issues and their mental health issues. The services that are provided onsite are what's called, you all may know it as peer services, but within this model, it's called recovery coaches, somebody who's been experienced with living addiction, but also experienced in living recovery, who help guide and support, that we make sure they're linked to the resources that you have in your community. When we did this snapshot, we had 22 out of 28 of our peers, as they're referred to, employed. That's huge. It really is, because most individuals come into these residences either from treatment, from jail, from drug court, from family, from homelessness or whatever, and they don't have that. And so we have had individuals successfully be employed because of the support we also receive from other stakeholders in the community. I think the snapshot really tried to capture all the things that you may be interested in looking at and where our referrals come from. Some of, one of the biggest stakeholders we have in this community that supports these programs is your ministerial association. And I'm going to tell you that when I'm asked from Richmond, and I have been asked by different agencies in Richmond, about what would you recommend for a community that's trying to do this, I tell them, support of your local government, but also the support of your ministerial association can make and break a program like this. Your ministerial association is phenomenal. We also have the support of all the major primary providers of services in here, plus we have not only the support of local government, but our delegates, we've even had Delegate Moorefield come and visit. We are scheduling an open house next month, but also Senator Kane and Senator Warner and their representatives have expressed interest in this and being supportive of this program. We also tie in, this model ties into the recovery community, because these individuals may be may be the ones who don't need treatment, or even if they do need treatment, they still need link to the recovery community because no matter where they live after this, they're going to be in recovery, you know, hopefully the rest of their lives. Treatment is time-limited, but recovery is lifelong. And so, they are tied in to the recovery community that you have in Russell County. And that's NAA, Celebrate Recovery, which is three of your bigger groups. Uh, also, one of our tasks are to provide even more recovery support services or provide access to those so that regardless of an individual's pathway to recovery, they're going to be able to access that resource here in Russell County. Uh, so, we also can't say enough for the support we get from your recovery community. Uh, those individuals who are in recovery and, and attending those meetings and getting the word out and being willing to support. They come in and do meetings at our programs and also support them in other ways. Another concept with these homes is the need to be a good neighbor. So, if you're going to be living in your community, you need to be a good neighbor to the others in your community. So, one of the goals of these programs are not just them working on their self-recovery, but to extend it to being involved, taking notice of what needs to be done in the community and being responsive to those needs. And I know some of the ways in other programs that have done this, like in the program that we're modeled after, um, they help out with shoveling snow or helping elderly people in the community, uh, helping with gardening, just doing things as you would and we do in our communities as good neighbors. So, that's another thing that goes with this model is modeling for individuals how to give back to your community, not just the recovery community, but your community at large. Our resource center, uh, the goal of it is to provide education, resources, um, make referrals, provide access to meetings for people individually, uh, to meet with family members or somebody who may come in and say, "I need help," or "I have a family member who needs help," or "I know someone," to know where to link them to. Also, if you have somebody in high school who's having to write a term paper, a research paper, uh, any information about addiction and recovery, they should be able to get at the, at your resource center. And it's a place where people, anybody in the community can drop in to visit, to see what you have, pick up brochures, pick up information, or get answers to your questions. And also, we are going to be expanding what we offer there by adding, uh, some groups that will meet there so that there's even more recovery resources and opportunities for support, a diverse, more diverse, um, number of recovery-based services. Another thing that's important to know about these programs and asking for your support is that the goal is to become VAR accredited. And that is the Virginia Association of Recovery Residences, which is a part of the national. So, this is a national movement that's been in existence since probably the late 90s, early 2000s. And they have established criteria, expectations, policies, and they do certification. So, one of our goals, and we've actually got our application in, the application's been accepted and they're going to come to a site visit. And if we are certified by VAR, then we are open to be certified by DBHDS. Now, these programs are not Medicaid billable, but maybe sometime in the future, that may be something that happens. But with that, it shows that we're meeting standards that have been established, both within the state and also nationally, um, in the service provision with this. So, that's another thing to add to this project is it's just not something local, thought-up local. It's following a model that has established policies, procedures, and expectations in order to show you that we're able to do what we are expected to do. And again, it's not treatment, but linking people to treatment. Um, and when I checked today, we had three beds. One, two were being filled today, and one is being filled by the end of the week. So, we'll be back at capacity again by the end of this week. So, we're serving 28 people right now. And, um, anyway.
Okay, thank you. If I may ask a question, if y'all don't mind? Um, you said that you're not accredited with VAR, so on your, VAR, your submission says no, but you're going to do that shortly?
Yes, we've already submitted the application and we've provided them with all the documentation. The only thing that's left is for them to come onsite to actually see the programs, to look at stuff, to make sure we do have policies, uh, to interview the board and staff and to actually have eyes on. But that's the last part, uh, I don't know if I'm looking up there, but that's the last thing that we need to do for them to make their decision. Uh, but they have indicated that everything we've submitted them meets their expectations. It just requires the site visit before they can formally approve it.
But you've submitted?
It is submitted now.
So, I can change that to yes?
Okay, but it, yes, it was submitted. It is, we've been doing it in pieces as well. Um, and, uh, because it's a, it's been a process with different policies, uh, and have you thought about this and have you done this? So, they told us that they now have everything that they need. It just needs a site visit to confirm that it's all real.
Anybody else want to ask Ms. Robin Edson questions?
How do you turn, how, how's the length of stay determined?
Okay, um, this model tells individuals who are interested and who are appropriate. It's not just anyone. There are guidelines as to who we can accept. Uh, but we ask for a minimum of six months, but we don't, we established no more than two years. But if they leave after two years and they're still eligible, at some point in the future, they could reapply. Not everybody is going to be able to live successfully on their own in the community at, at the same rate. So, that's why they're longer, uh, because it, recovery takes a long, it takes a while. Uh, and we want them to learn how to, uh, live comfortably in, in recovery and also how to take care of themselves, uh, in the ways that, how to wash clothes, how to cook, how to budget, uh, how to handle stress, how to get along with people living in an environment. Because it should reduce, it's expected to reduce their chances of being successful once they step out into independent housing or return to families, uh, with that.
That sort of leads into my next question about how you transition these people out. And, and as far as your life, I guess your resource center, do you teach them any kind of life skills? You were talking about teaching them how to balance a budget, apply for loans. I think that's very important.
Those are things that we're actually going to be working towards. Uh, we are still considered a new program, getting up and running and getting established, getting, working out the kinks. But yes, I've actually talked to someone about doing, like, many seminars on how to manage, how to balance a checkbook or how to, um, uh, do budgets, how to do taxes and things like that. Uh, but a lot of that is taught, uh, by, uh, learning from each other and things. But, um, we do have plans to add access to a whole lot more stuff, but we can't do it all at one time. It's a process. Uh, we have to get full, stable and things. But those are issues that have been identified, uh, things that a lot of us take for granted. We learn how to do, some we're taught how to do. Uh, and oftentimes, individuals in our area, uh, the addiction process starts really early. Uh, you know, usually I'm finding that first use is early teens, if not late childhood. Um, and so, for some, they've never had an opportunity to learn those life skills. So, we have individuals that come into the programs who addiction came later after they learned life skills. We got to help them brush it off, you know, dust it off or whatever that saying is, and get them back on track. And for some, it's literally teaching them brand-new stuff, skills that they didn't have before.
So, transitional housing, is that going to be an issue?
Uh, if you're talking about transitioning from this, this is really considered transitional housing.
Well, that's kind of what I'm wondering, you know?
It is a step down from treatment programs, residential treatment programs. It's, uh, these, this model is seen as a step down. It's also seen as a response to the needs of, uh, for reentry, uh, for drug court participants to be able to participate in drug court, uh, whereas before, they didn't have, they were either homeless or didn't have stable housing, uh, that would support them while they were in drug court. So, uh, that's another thing. Judge Moore, um, has agreed for, you know, anyone from another county, uh, they are going to follow for drug court until that individual's ready to return to their, uh, home, uh, home drug court. So, that's another example of, of everybody working together with that, especially since we weren't successful in getting the regional drug court centered here, which would have served southwest Virginia and other parts of the state where everything was done there, but we were not fortunate enough to get the funding. But that is still a goal overall for drug court purposes, uh, for that. So, with the question about transitional, really at this point, it would be for them to look for their own independent housing or to be able to return to family or to relocate, if that's what they want to do, into a new community. But it's to prepare them to be able to live successfully and independently or to be able to live successfully, uh, with a family.
I would imagine you have a lot more applications than you're able to accept.
Absolutely. Um, we, uh, one of the things that we had to answer, uh, for continued VAR funding was, do you have any similar resources anywhere in, you know, what's the closest? Uh, this year, Dickinson County was funded by VAR to model what Dickinson County, Dickinson County is to model what Russell County is doing here. And it's with the same funding, so we're setting up the same thing. They've only, we've only gotten the women's residence open right now in the resource center, uh, and we hopefully, knock on wood, will get the lease signed for the men's facility. It's going to be on a much smaller scale than here. It will have, if all things work out, we'll have a capacity of 18. But I know that I had to take all the surrounding counties. And Russell County was the only one that had these services with Dickinson County having just opened, um, and accepted the first one for Dickinson for the women's program. Now, I know other counties are trying to do this and they have proposals, and I think some receive some startup funding, uh, in some. But, um, I even had to go into Kentucky, of course, have lots of services because that's been a huge initiative by their senator. Um, so, in our neighboring Kentucky and in West Virginia too, we do have some, but not close. Uh, but Russell County is the closest. So, we get referrals actually from all over the region and even a little bit beyond because it's the only recovery, uh, model, uh, in service that's available. But the goal is to be able to replicate this in all of our counties, just like we do with drug courts. We started with one adult drug court and now, uh, southwest Virginia had the biggest expansion of drug courts in the state of Virginia following the OxyContin epidemic where all the court, of the counties. So, we now have an adult drug court in all the counties in far southwest Virginia. And the goal is to be able to do the same thing, uh, with this, um, in all of our counties in far southwest Virginia, with Russell County, uh, taking the lead and helping develop a model that's going to work in a rural community. And that's another challenge, you know, with transportation. Housing and transportation are the two biggest challenges and barriers to successful recovery in any of our counties, just because we are rural and we have geographically distant communities within our large, um, counties. So, uh, we're, that was one of the, um, goals of VAR was to support Russell County being successful so that they could help replicate that in neighboring counties when the opportunity came up, comes up.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions? Comments?
I had a question. What age do these people range, say from 16 to 21 or older ones?
They have to be adults.
They had to be adults?
Yes, 18 and older. And there's no age limit, uh, on the bad end of it, but they have to be legally an adult.
The ones that are present and participating, what average age are they?
Okay, on, uh, in the snapshot, we did this on May the 25th, and I didn't get those demographics for today, uh, but since we'd only had three leave since May the 25th and we've got three more coming in, uh, we had two peers that fell between 18 and 25, 10 that fell between 26 and 35, 11 between 36 and 45, 46 and 55, 55 with five peers, and that was the oldest. And this is actually very similar to drug courts. When we first started, uh, because of that, we, these were all very young individuals. But now you have addiction and they've aged. So, it's not in common, uh, that it's no longer the 18 to 25-year-olds that are coming, you know, and doing, uh, that, they're being targeted. It is those who are well into adulthood.
Lonzo?
Yes, David?
I've got a question. Uh, is there any been any discussion or a conversation with a plan to talk or discuss with, uh, our local businesses and industries, uh, to inform them about this plan or project? I know one of the biggest things I see is the lack of income, uh, you know, or structure of, of, of being in the workforce once they, you know, go to drug court and trying to be able to get a job. Uh, it's conversation, I guess, with local industries to try to get their assistance and help to be able to provide a, uh, a workplace for these, uh, these people also.
I'll let Lonzo answer that, but I will say that you all do have industries that support because we even have one company, and I honestly don't know the name of it, uh, but comes and picks them up or picks them up at a, at a point, a pickup point. And, uh, we have several that are employed within walking distance. Uh, and that's, and that's another barrier that most of them don't have driver's license. So, uh, we have to rely on being able to get there. But we do get the word out, um, and I know in the beginning, uh, we tried to get the word out to everyone and not everybody is receptive. Uh, but we have had businesses that are willing to interview and hire. Uh, that's why we have 20, on that day, we had 22 out of 28 who were already employed. Uh, and we only had one that was on disability. Um, and they, uh, if, we had one that was employed when they came into the program, but after, on the, May the 25th, uh, of those 20, of the 28 people, one was employed coming into the program, but 21 additional people got employed after they were in the program.
Oh, that's good.
Yes. Uh, and I thought that speaks well too because it's willing to give people a second chance. And that is, and that's something that we hear a lot now, uh, is about the second chance. Are you a second chance, um, industry or business? Uh, are you a second chance community organization where you do look and see that second chances are possible?
Yes.
So.
Well, thank you for that.
And I didn't know from an economic or, if you wanted to add to that, that's just what I can speak to.
Yeah, this program is so new and it is so pervasive that it, um, not only from our drug courts, but from our community work programs, the core systems, businesses, the ministerial associations, this has grand, this has gained the attention of the governor himself. And actually, when she was talking, he, the, the governor and the attorney general is actually, is trying to make slate to attend the open house. So, the, uh, also the director of the OAA McDonald, which is the Opiate Authority of State Virginia, that Senator Pillion, you know, chairs, he, they have a big interest in this. This has hit the radar from here to Richmond as a model. So, that they're going to use in all of the communities, especially the rural communities. It's working well. It's, it's developing. But one of the things that we all, when we started doing the policies and be able to get this, we used it as a step-down process to get them out of the environment between the interactions because once you have a, an opiate, uh, someone that dependency and you, or a drug dependency and you send them back into the environment, your, your, your failure goes up tremendously. You're back in the same environment that you were in. So, this is a, this is a neutral place, but one of the things that we tied to it is the ones that have unemployment, they pay monthly rent. They do. And what you're going to see is the ones that's in there and they come in and they come out, they will tran, they understand managing money because they're paying rent, they're buying their clothes, they're doing this, but they're also learning how to transition on their own without that dependency of that environment. Not going back to that same old... Not going back to that same old environment of drugs. And it's, it's been very successful in short amount of period of time. And one thing to add on to that Cheryl, um, mentioned, we, we put in for a SANSA grant. That's the federal grant when we first did this. We were so successful. Well, we were successful, we weren't. We, we actually ranked third in the nation. We hit third, but the funding during COVID was cut to two awardees. So we, we made it to the doorstep and that's why DBHDS, as Cheryl had mentioned before, when COVID hit and the extra federal funding came available, they gave us that opportunity because we ranked so high on the federal, uh, uh, scale and not-
And the turnout that happened that October the 30th, because they could not get over how many people showed up that day to say, this is a need and we want to learn about it. And I want to say that because I got comments from, uh, different agencies, but also from Richmond saying, we couldn't believe you have that many that showed up for that meeting.
They couldn't, and they still can't believe how many partners you got. I mean, it's amazing. This is a little quiet, little program that's running that Russell County should be very proud of, you know, the board has, has condoned with it. Y'all were in the first meeting that we had in the conference center and the SS is developed. And everybody has been in it or through it either directly or indirectly with the ministerial associations, with boards, with donations. It's just been going on and now it's hit the radar of the state, so.
And I'm gonna, this has always stuck with me too, but when, uh, the gentlemen that were working to, to renovate or to make the changes to the building because we had to be ADA compliant and to get it ready, we had gentlemen that were on the work crews that asked to be considered to live there. They were, so that was something that's always stuck with me about this particular program. We had candidates, uh, people wanting to, uh, to be admitted who in the building wasn't even ready yet, but they saw what it was going to be.
Sure did.
That's a, and that's a true story.
Was. Any more questions?
I think we're good.
Well, I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Robinett.
No, thank you all.
Nice presentation. We appreciate you.
Nervous of all of that.
You didn't ask?
I said I was just talking to a small group and whatever and not knowing what might be thrown.
We're small.
But I know, but it's a little intimidating.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And I do want to thank you all too, because everybody smiled. So I felt like I was a pretty authoritarian lady. And I was just hoping so much that I didn't get asked a question and get stomped and think, you know, I should know that.
I think, as you noted early, earlier, Russell County's been in recovery business for a long time. And this is really the piece that everybody has been waiting for. And I think the fact that you're getting so many more applications than what you're able to handle shows that there's a drastic need for it and, you know, maybe we need to be looking for more facilities.
Well.
Well, we have, we had looked at that, but back to the VAR certification, back to the VAR certification, we have already implemented everything for certification. We, we already make certification. Just the site visits, only thing that we're lacking to have certification. So that's the one and only component that we like.
And I did want to mention that that is one of our long-term goals, is to be able to expand and add more beds. And another thing about the board of directors, uh, we've gotten, I've had people ask me about this from other organizations, because we have representation from local government, from law enforcement, from the court system, from, uh, you know, a, a local businessman here, uh, the ministerial association is our vice chair, uh, Pastor Jeff. So, uh, that was another thing that I get, I got, I get asked about is who's on your board? Um, and it's like, you've got a cross-section represented on this board, making sure that everybody's interests are being, uh, looked at. Nobody's being left behind.
Well, that's good.
And I had a call the other day from a county, a judge in a county in northern Virginia who said that I've heard that you all have started recovery housing. Uh, could you call me one day and tell me how you all pulled that off in a small rural county? Uh, he said, I'm up here and we don't have a clue. So I said, well, we, when you're ready to talk, we can certainly, uh, tell you how we did it here.
It's a impressive program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, Mr. Lester, I think we've got you on our presentation list for number two.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, on the presentation, of course, this is the hopefully last meeting we've had, I think this makes what the fifth budget meeting we've had, um, for the FY 2324 county-wide budget. And, uh, this gives me an opportunity to go through some last-minute things and that have not only come through the state, but what we're seeing and gives us an opportunity to look at what is over, we're going to be, uh, dealing with over the next 12 months, 12, you know, to 36 months. Um, as we go through it, the, um, after talking with the, um, House Majority Leader, uh, as y'all know, it's in our, in the news, they are not even close to getting a state budget. So let's start there. So they're not close. So, uh, they're still negotiating, uh, between, uh, taxation and raises. And that was one of the things that I put into the resolution because I came down to the last minute, uh, they haven't got it passed. So in the budget resolution, I have added a clause into the, uh, resolution for the fiscal year 202324. That had the same numbers that we had looked at before, other than the small numbers that, uh, or changes that we amended at y'all's request. But as the last resolution, being still further resolved, that the board supervisors will amend the fiscal year 202324 county-wide budget to reflect the same percentile of the statewide budget approved by the General Assembly for the fiscal year 2324 appropriations for a statewide employee salary increase. Right now, and this is the House Majority Leader speaking, so he's, he's pretty well, it's between five, six and seven. So when it is set by the state, this gives an opportunity to go back and revise the budget. Right now it is, it's, the budget is developed at seven percent. So that's, that's the maximum impact. So if we go to six, then that's an advantage and et cetera. So, uh, but right now to show the maximum impact on the county, because we don't want to come up with a short file, it is set at seven percent. Now, of course, as we go through the budget, um, we have these functions that I had mentioned before, we have 23 or 24 major core in functions in the budget within the county. Of course, those are general administration, judicial, public safety, environmental, general services, health and wildfire, education, parks, recreation, culture, community development, non-departmental capital outlay and debt service. These are the ones that we must list by the Code of Virginia to show how we utilize our taxes within the county in the most efficient way. As you can see, this is what we call the total general fund. And as you can see, right now, we are estimating at 29 million 175,691. Now, to give you even a further breakdown, which is includes all these 55 different departments, which we'll go into in a second, this is a snapshot of the Russell County 23, 2324 county-wide budget. As you can see, um, education is 32% of the budget. Uh, environmental control is 23, which is the landfills, the transfer stations and all the disposal sites, convenience centers, whatever you want to call them. Uh, and of course, health and wildfire, general services, general administration, judicial, public safety, and what we call the other, which is the park and recs, community development and capital outlay. Now that makes up the 100% of the budget right there, that's in the snapshot. So here is what y'all had seen. This is how it breaks out even farther into the 55 major department listing. When I say general administration, that sounds very simple. It makes up, as, as we can see, as general administration, it's eight percent. By under that eight percent, you have the board supervisors, the county administrator, the auditors, commissioner of revenue, treasurer, assistant's office, procurement and electoral. As public safety, uh, you have the sheriff's office, liver control, fire departments, rescue departments, state forestry, we actually have to find out too, regional jail, building inspector, 911, medical examiner, emergency management and animal control. That's, that's the breakdown under those components. Of course, even back to the education, 32%. That's not only Russell County schools, that is the race program too, and our annual contribution, uh, contribution that we have to do by law to the Southwest Community College based off our population demographics coming out of schools. So again, judicial, which is court assistants, magistrate's office, probation, clerk, court security, Commonwealth attorney, victim witness. Again, under environmental control, which is the second component, we have disposal operations inside landfills and transfer stations. Health and wildfire, we have Department of Health, Department of Social Services, the community service boards, the appellations, agency of senior citizens. Then it breaks down into the other, which is the parks, community centers, conference centers, old courthouse, library, planning commission, IDA, PSA, planning districts, uh, the planning housing authority, highway safety tourism, contributions, soil and water, Virginia Extension Office, capital outlay, the county insurance, town taxes and debt service. It's a, it's a 55 different components that makes up this budget or operations. Of course, back again, I had mentioned in one of the other four meetings, when this board set in place in 2015, you had a $1.5 million deficit. That is it, period. You had no way to make it up. You didn't have taxes in place. You didn't have anything in place to cover a deficit. That meant you were going into another $1.5 million deficit if you had continued along the same path. You also had a $3 million rand note you were piggybacking off of, paying the debt load on borrowed money with a high interest rate. So y'all have alleviated the, the 1.5 deficit, you have alleviated a $3 million rand note and at that time you had a, what we call a double B bond rating, which means not a good credit rating, not, actually, we had to utilize the talent of Levins Bond Rating to do our economic development projects, period. You now have a double A bond rating by yourself, period. What would that have meant on a double A bond rating versus a B and B? A $3 million loan at 2%, which is what we get now, is 640,000 in interest. A $3 million with a double B is 2.3 million dollars in interest. That's the variance. It, 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 it restricts what you can do from a community development, an infrastructure development or an economic development. You can't go put water and sewer in. You couldn't get the loan to afford to pay the interest rate on, period. Since 2015, of course, you know, you've cut operations, landfill, restructure contracts, services in-house and other things. You've also, over the eight years, you've gave, uh, 23% bonuses, I mean, pay increases with two bonuses. And you have right now either five, six or seven percent, which would equal 30% pay raise since 2015. In this year, which is a different year, we had additional appropriations, which, uh, uh, from the casino and people worry about that. Under the, the Code of Virginia that was written for casinos, which has 13, 11 counties and two cities involved in this agreement, under the Code of Virginia, the legislation General Assembly passed, Jim McGlothlin of United, which is the casino, he wanted this put in to give to the Southwest, the coal counties in Southwest Virginia as a benefit for, to give back to the communities. And of 600,000 of the casino funds, it's restricted for public safety, education and transportation. Those are the only thing that we can contribute with this fund. We gave 156,875 to fire and rescue straight off the top of this year's budget. We increased their budget by almost 50% each. You, uh, we also took care of the SVCC annual payment and the race program of 233,201 and the rest had to go for court operations, like you heard right here from the opiate, the addictions, travel, the other things for court operations. Also during the last meeting, there was one of the biggest budget line items that we were dealing with, going back to the waste management contract, which we come in and aligned with. After multiple negotiations, as Tim McCarroll will tell you, multiple negotiations and a couple times restructuring contracts, we finally got to where a price that we can live with. And maybe we'll improve on that as time goes on too. Current, currently in the county, as I pointed out before, we have 41 fully funded county employees and 38 part-time. The rest are constitution officers or grant-supported or federal or state-supported positions. Of the 14 full-time, I've got, I mean, of the ones, 41 that I've got here are full-time, 14 of them make minimum wage. 14 of the 41 are, are minimum wage employees. As you can see, here is the 25 major core budget operations that you had seen before, which we brought up the numbers. All the 29 million that you seen for the total budget, which includes DSS and all the other operations, federal and state, total comprehensive, 24, almost 23.7 million dollars is in the 20, in these 25 core operations, period, which you have to do by law. That's it. Here is the breakdown of the full-time employees. As you can see, as the landfill, I guess, we have seven administration. That's my office. I got four. Register's office, if you alleviate one, well, who you going to take? One from the register, I ain't got but one in most of the other offices. The treasurer has two, tax coordinator, one, judge secretary, one, but you get the point. There, there's not a lot of administration in labor here in all these 55 different departments, 25 major core assets and operations. The part-time employees are disposal sites and the landfill. They, they're sitting there working 10 hours, 15 and handling and doing the trash. Not a major expenditure of the 29 million dollars. County administration, court bailiffs and the library. I got seven at the library out of the, out of 37. That helps at the library. As a, as, also as a snapshot, I want to give them during the COVID and during ARPA funds, uh, which I'll have that at the next board meeting from the, uh, auditors, public council, which certification. To the fire departments and the rescues, we have gave out 1.3 million dollars. That is what we gave out, as you can see, in appropriations, cares and ARPA, since July 2020 to March of 23, March of 2023, you gave them 1.334 million dollars to help them operate. And again, I'd mentioned before, y'all also increased their budgets, as you can see here on the fire and rescue, you took up from last year's expenditures, using the lottery money, 50% increase in their budget appropriations, but for all the fire and the rescues within the county. Now, the next thing, this goes into the presentation that was done by Cheryl for the recovery house. This is the regional jail. Now, what does this say? One is two things. First, during this year's budget, we had budgeted for 160 inmates, which was 2.2 million dollars with a debt load of 484,000. This year, taking the recovery houses, moving these out, we're down, we went from 160 to 110 budget. That's 50 drop. And how's that translate too? I'm getting ready to show you. It went from 2.2 million to 1.7 million on operations and dropped the debt load service from 484 to 372. What is that in savings? Real numbers in the bank, in the cash and the treasury house, 580,163.27. That's how y'all are operating. You're not raising taxes. You haven't raised taxes in 23 years. The tax rate 23 years ago was actually a pincher higher than it was. It's cut cost and efficiency of operations, piece by piece, operation by operation. 580,000, that's, that's unheard of. Every county in Southwest Virginia going, what are y'all doing over there? They would actually pay just to get the model of the program you're getting because it's worth 600,000 to set and run these programs. And not only, now that's real cash, not putting them in jail. That does not include the extra work that you get done at the community centers, the libraries, all of through the county, the towns, the government center, this government center is cleaned by one of them that used to be here. We, we have no housekeeping staff, we do not. At the courthouse, it was the community work program. Now, and at, I know that it was mentioned also at the communities, at the disposal sites where that we should use them there too, but the problem is this, they have to be supervised, they cannot just be arbitrarily, they have to have supervision, and they have to be under control, you know, in that control and in that environment until they go back to the housing component, so. Now, to go on to what Cheryl had said as the county, this is a little bit of good demographics from our county stats, from our aging population, I don't know, but this is not just from Russell County's perspective, but this is also from a national perspective. Bloomberg, two days ago, and I had these looked at a couple weeks ago, and then Bloomberg pretty well confirmed it, in twenty thirty, people aged sixty five or older are going to have a higher population than the ones that's eighteen and below. That's twenty thirty, that is seven years from now. So right now, of our total population, as you can see in the demographics, between twenty twenty, twenty thirty, and twenty forty, our population is going to drop, or, and it's also going to age. Now, how does that translate into jobs? Now, here is what is a snapshot that we pulled out from the University of Virginia and the Virginia Employment Commission. In the counties right now in Russell County, we can tell you based off of where they pay taxes, where they report to, they're filed with IRS and Virginia Employment Commission, they place tax, so we can track, track the employees where they work at, and where they travel from into in their place of residence. Right now, in Russell County, we have ten, the top ten residents are commuting to, which is Tassel County number one, Washington County number two. The top ten places that workers are commuting from, which is Washington County and Tassel, Tassel County, the reverse. Now, what does that play into? If I look at all of our workers, our total workforce, we, if you look at the numbers, communicate, commuting out of Russell County is five thousand four hundred and thirty six commuting out. You only have twenty seven, seventy eight commuting in. You're a fifty one percent loss, they're communicating out. Now, what does that say? Now, Russell County is the heart of southwest Virginia, seven counties touch our borders. It's easy to go to McCannan County, work in the mines, it's easy to go to Tassel, it's easy to go to Dixon, it's easy to go to Scott County, Tennessee, we've got them, we've got everywhere where they work, exactly where they work at. So it is easy to tram in, tram out, but what that's going to do over the next three years or five years, up to thirty, is going to translate, you've got to bring back more in, that number of commuting out is going to get greater and greater to where you're exceeding the travel out than working in. You've got to get, and where I'll, I'll go into that in a little bit in through here. Now, what we have, when people talk about Russell County's unemployment rate, now, even during the pandemic, now, our current employment rate is right now three point six percent. Now, that, that is not bad for Russell County, people in Russell County work, it's your, it's these other things, the population, the younger generation, the older generation is retiring, younger generation is getting smaller. We have three point six, and the state, in the United States is three point six, so we're up with the national. This is just reported as of June the second, this is how soon this is. So we have an unemployment rate of three point six, the Virginia has two point nine, and the United States has three point six. Now, the unemployment rates of, between each of these different businesses in Russell County, we're up to five hundred and ninety nine businesses. I know that Mr. Brady didn't ask all the time, he wants a list of the five hundred and ninety nine businesses, or be able to track that ones that come in and ones that come out. Now, how does that come out to play is employment by sizes and the rest, but here is your fifty largest employers in the county. Of course, the Russell County School Board is number one, they, they include federal, state and local. Samuel's is number two, Walmart, three, CGI, et cetera, these are the top fifty. Now, here was the one that, that gets really interesting, the employment by the industry, which we know in southwest Virginia, you got, we got government, which includes the federal, the state and the local, and we got good health, you know, healthcare. Of course, you got mining queries and the rest, but the majority of these long bars right here is, I hate to say, it's, it's in retail and accommodation and food service, that's where those new jobs are coming from, those are the, what we, yes. So this is the most interesting one I liked the most from our perspective from economic development was new startup firms. We've had twenty three new startups in twenty two, in new businesses in Russell County, that's it. I mean, they have filed for their IRS, their seven, seven, seven sixties, they have put their paperwork in for businesses, either a single proprietor all the way up, you've got twenty three. Now, of that twenty three, if I look at the new hires by industrial, again, right, here's the chart, that big long bar, retail, next is one, accommodations and food service. Even your new startups are accommodations. Now, what does that translate by the age of workers, your population, and the rest is this. You got the three point six percent unemployment. You're in match with the national. What should be focused on is not your employment rate, is the quality of jobs. What jobs you get in here now should be able to sustain a family. They've got to be competitive with right now, I can, you can go to Walmart, because we're competing with them right now, trying to hire, or McDonald's, I'm serious, you're at fifteen, sixteen dollars on these retail jobs that you're competing with to try to get skilled workers, quality jobs, quality environment, that's the ones that will actually bring that fifty seven, seventy eight back into Russell County. They will come if you develop those quality jobs, you can bet on it. They will pull out of Tassel County, or the mechanics, or the welders that, and that's going into McCannan County, or Dixon County to work, or Washington County to work, they will come back. So I know that is a lot said, but that is it in a nutshell, but you, here is the demographics, you got three point six, you're working well, but the next thirty six months, you're going to have to work towards quality jobs, quality jobs. If you don't, it's going to back into the same, you had twenty two new startups, food service, retail, accommodations, that's it. There was not one industrial, sorry, you got to have quality jobs. So any questions? I know I was a lot throw at you at one time. I will, I'll be glad to send it to you electronically. Yes. So. So as far as a financial condition, the fiduciary responsibilities of the board of supervisors, the county's okay.
So you're telling me we don't have any of that wasteful spending that I keep hearing?
If they do, please come and show me. And I came from, you know, thirty years in the government, and you know, and I'm conservative, and you, when you say that conservative, wasteful spending now, it's, I'm, I'm looking at it going, okay, I, I really worry about this, me and the treasurer, actually, we, we actually go at this over and over, trying to keep this competitive, but one of the things y'all can't do is, you, you've got, we're competing with, I got forty one employees, I mean, where am I at as far as wasteful spending? Now, if it's pencils, that's not material, you can go at twenty nine million dollars all day long at pencils and paper, you'll never get there. And let, and the only way your, your budget, your finance is sound. If, if you want to open up, and I know that is on one here, on this one, disposal sites were opened up, and that was convenience of the previous general, Mr. Hess, they, y'all had already asked me to look at it, so we, we're at the point that due to the contract negotiations of the waste management, due to the, the county budget, we're in financial sound, that is at the option and discretion of the board supervisors if they want to open up on Wednesdays. Now, that is up to them. Now, as you can see, and the other couple of things that I pointed out in the budget, if you had time to go through the sixty some odd pages of it, and you know, of the fifty five different cores, of course, we also put money in there for the spearhead trails, you got the trail of money that you did. Now, also, I put a line in there for the Lower Bed Lake, which is, by the way, that's grant, we got a grant during the meantime, twenty five thousand dollars from Virginia Economic Development Authority, PSCDA, to pay for our study. So the money that we were trying to find, they gave it to us. So now, that gives the money back to the board supervisors for a line item that I put in y'all's budget for discretionary spending, that will give you the betterment of the community. PSCDA is really paying for it, I'm matching apples, funding for funding, that gives y'all an opportunity to go back in during this year and take care of what got dropped or didn't get attention, I ain't gonna say dropped, didn't get attention during the two years of COVID. Not that we couldn't do it, you couldn't get the materials to do it, you couldn't get the people to do it, and you couldn't get anything, I mean, it came to a standstill during that time. So we're coming out, quality jobs, you, community development, and you've got to balance the budget. I mean, it's solid. For now.
I think it's remarkable, given the economic conditions that we, we're up against and the inflation that we're seeing, that we're able to do this, you know? And, and what I see down the road, I know there are some jobs that are coming, we're just right around the corner on something, pure salmon, you know, two hundred and twenty some odd jobs, probably within the next eighteen months.
Construction.
Eighteen to twenty four, something like that.
There's a couple of the ones that the, the IDA is working on, they're, they're getting close.
I know.
I mean, if we can just get over this, but again, that fifty seven, seventy eight, that number sticks in my head, it's going out of this county. Now, I, I talked to Washington County, and of course, when, uh, we're all on the, the casino board, and, and from a tax perspective, as long as you live and, and breathe in Russell County, you know, they, they work there, yeah, you, you pay taxes here, we want you to live here, but one of the things that they were also going to have to approach is, if you bring the fifty seven, seventy eight back, which is going to spread, you're going to have to get more housing, I'm telling you, you have no houses, you, the market is bare, you can't find a real place, you can't find a house to buy.
We're still trying to get some money to do a housing study, through Cumberland Plateau, and Cumberland Plateau Housing Authority, so we, we need that in the worst way.
Pure salmon, or another prospective job that we're working on right now, was to implement right now, you have no word for it, period. I mean, you won't, you will not find it, not for the quality jobs that you're talking about.
I talked Senator Hackworth at the groundbreaking that year the other day, I talked to him about that, and he's, he's aware of it, and he's, he's working on it, so.
For these.
But there's not a good answer for it, you know, because of the inflation that we're seeing, he telling me, two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build a house.
It is two hundred and fifty dollars.
So quarter million dollars for a thousand square foot house is not.
We've got some estimates here lately, and that's about what it is, but. And, and the thing about it is, if you put pure salmon in and you put in a business down here, those jobs are, are in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar ranges. They're, these people are not going to stay in a one-bedroom apartment, I'm telling you, they will go to Washington County and live, just like you did with North of Grumman and CGI.
We need, we need, we're gonna have to think outside the box a little bit, and we were talking about the possibility of seeing if we can find some grant mon, money to maybe buy some property and install the utilities, which is always a big upfront cost for the developers, and maybe try to get that back on the back end of everything through the taxes and such. So we need to, we need to be thinking along that line, identify some areas that we could go to.
Even if you gave the property to them, you would get it back out of the real estate person property, more than the value of the land would be, period.
I have a twenty house site already, I got a plan from Virginia Tech, and the county has property.
I've got some real estate property on sale, residence.
It's gotta be a good price.
Mine's got water and sewer on it, how about yours, boys?
You've almost, if you've got property with water and sewer, that's a big plus.
Water and sewer you have to have, the developers will not, electricity, water and sewer, believe it or not, to move a, into a single-phase, three-phase is astronomical now, those three things, water, sewer and electricity, you better have on that site.
If you can get natural gas, it'd be great too.
Uh, that's just the added benefit, but, but these things, you're going to have to get in place, you're going to have to work, if they go in, they go in next week, if they go in next month, and I'm not, I'm not giving away anything, I'm telling you right now, you have no place to live.
A mine has water, but it doesn't have sewer and has electricity, two of them.
You got two of the three?
I got two, Al, Al seven, Al seven laws. But I'm not giving them away.
But this is not a bad thing to look at, if you got an opportunity, but you're going to have to hyper-focus on quality, housing, and these things, not, not the small things, not the paper, not the pencils, that ain't, that's not going to get you where you need to be in three, five, seven years from now.
Well, I told Travis, in order to do what he's talking about, we're going to have some federal help and some state help.
And they are out there.
And funding, you know, to do some of this stuff, I'm, I'm looking at it, you know, I think we've got to do something, housing is going to be critical, and I'm talking worker housing, not, you know, half million dollar houses.
Worker housing, and that's all they're looking for, because you can, you can go to the assessor's office, it, it gets really competitive when people come into the assessor's office looking for property, you know it's bad. I mean, instead of looking online and Zillow and this, and when you have them coming in saying, okay, Wednesday, is so-and-so going to sell their property, are you thinking about?
I go down to North Carolina where my kids live, and I see all this cooker cutter, cookie cutter housing, you know, built it, and I know why, because they can, they can build a lot of houses off the same set of plans, and they can do it substantially cheaper when they buy the bulk materials, and Travis even said that, she said, I can build three or four houses at same, you know, off the same design, said I can do them a heck of a lot cheaper, you know, than.
And put them in either the same units, and then once we're looking at like condos and stuff, you, you've already got one of the four walls that you already need, just by building the other adjacent units, so I mean, it's a, well, efficiencies.
Rental property is, as well, you know, there's no rental property.
Well, what I run into when trying to sell my property is they want a double Y or Marla, and they're not allowed, because most of these younger couples are telling me they can't get a contractor to build what they call stick house, a legal house, they can't find a contractor to do it.
You won't. Not, not, not at any reasonable price, you won't.
Two hundred and fifty dollars is the going price, that's correct.
They're considering the price of property, sewer, water, and of course, electricity already in that area, and time they do that, man, they've got quite a bit of money involved, but I'm starting a home, that's why they want to go with a Marla or double Y.
And that, that's, that's one of the things from the, the demographics is, it costs so much to build new, they're trying to go after the old houses, that's why you have no surplus in this county inventory, because the old houses, as soon as they hit the market, sometimes they have sold, not even going on the market, I've seen them selling one to two days.
Well, we've got people that are actually renovating houses, you know, they're, they're doing rehab projects, one or two houses at a time, Woody McPlanahan, he bill.
Right.
You know, they're, they're doing all sorts of.
And you, there's a lot of them doing a lot of, and they say one to two days, it's, where it's sold before they even get it completed. And it's sold before they can put the carpet down.
Yeah, well, why, and I know for a fact that Woody's letting some people pick out what they wanted, you know?
That's an easy sell. But the point is, is, again, you've been in good financial stores, the county has a double A bond rating, you have, you have, you're financially stable to move forward with what you want to do, and you can have things, you're not hindered, you're not boxed in, but you're going to have to hyper-focus on quality jobs, economic development, housing and community infrastructure. What am I saying is, that means stuff like communities, Lower Bed Lake, places to go, places to eat, because you don't want them zipping through here to the casino, because I was with the owner of the casino last week, he was in my office, and I talked to him right face to face, and. He was in my office, and I talked to him right face to face, and right now, they're, they're on project for the two towers in the stage. They're projecting two point five million people coming through this place. And they're, they're hitting every number, they're exceeding every number. We might even end up, I've got six hundred thousand, we might end up at seven hundred thousand, or even better. We don't know the final number yet, because it is exceeding so fast that we can't get to the correct number until the June thirtieth date, so.
When they're built out fully into the hard rock, it's no tell.
They have contracts with country singers, rock singers, I mean, these are big, big names, and they're go- and they got a fifty thousand capacity stage that's that's modeled on this. And they do come through here, because they gotta come through nineteen and fifty-eight, out of the other states. You touched seven counties. Other than that, we also talked about, uh, it's eighty-one. I mean, that's it. Or you want to drive Highway eleven, anybody wants to drive that beat, but the fastest way is fifty-eight, nineteen, or eighty-one.
Going back to the budget, I had a question, the fire department rescue, they got a fifty percent increase in the budget.
About appropriations in the last year.
Uh, well, Jess Powers Department, emergency management, I didn't see anything or increase in his. He doesn't do grants now, can't do grants, he got somebody to help him. Should there not be an increase in his budget for operation expense and all?
Yes, there actually is going to be increased, because actually Jess has interviewed for a part-time, and he has picked one out. Uh, he was starting the week after July the fourth, so I'll be adjusting that for the salary. That's one of those things that gets adjusted as they're hired. Yes, there's a part-time that's coming in that Jess chose, and it'll be helping him.
I need to talk to him, I don't want to, I talked to him yesterday, but I haven't talked with him in two, three weeks, and we don't, I found out he's on vacation.
Yeah, he's on vacation, that's correct. But, again, between all the economic things you got, you, emergency management and its rest, but um, the fire and rescue, as you got up here in front of your screens, you know, they got each one of them across the board, and all fire and rescue got fifty percent.
I mean, I appreciate getting, I'm not kicking against them getting, and also, you know, the county employees. Uh, I like to see them get up to that, uh, so we can attract more people.
Remember, I got fourteen of the forty-one is part-time.
Part-time.
I, I mean, has a a minimal wage salary, minimum wage.
So, um, Walmart's and Borough King or McDonald's, whoever's going to get these people if we take, you know, attract them with the the wages and benefits.
And and mention the benefits, and one of the things you've got to remember is, we were also reduced, you either get a five, six, or seven percent increase in salary, that's the state, you know, that will come through, and never, that'll apply both on full-time and part-time. We also lowered the health insurance premiums by six hundred and twenty-some dollars a year, twenty-nine dollars a year. What that equates to is an extra fifty or sixty dollars, teacher sixty, fi- uh, county employees, fifty dollars a month, straight. That's automatic into their pay, uh, paid role. That's a benefit. That's actually, in essence, a pay raise. So again, yes, sir.
I got a question, uh, just an idea I think would be pretty productive is have a representative that are next meeting from the planning commission and the IDA. I know that the IDA has confidential agreements, I can't talk about law, but it would be good if if we could have a conversation with them to kind of get an idea from their perspective, what their plan is going forward. Uh, maybe you could send this data, information to the planning commission and the IDA to give them an insight of all that information, and I really appreciate all that, and I appreciate you going to send it out to us, uh, from the board, uh, to be able to review and look at this, because I think we are in a in a position where we're gonna have to think outside the box and and do some team building and talk and have some conversations with our planning commission to see if they've got plans going forward. I know they have a lot of regulation, and they have to deal with the health department, different aspects. Uh, there's a lot of restrictions, uh, without infrastructure, it's hard to grow. I mean, you've got property out there, even in my district, that you can't get it perked. And without infrastructure, you know, it's a, a, a very large expense for anybody to do anything on that property. Uh, and, you know, I know I've talked to Steve and different ones about growing our infrastructure base, uh, like a sewer plant in Hansville and different things like that, that, like he said, you know, without those amenities, none of the infrastructure uh, projects, it's hard to grow in those areas because of the huge expense that that we're facing. But, you know, I would like to see, from the planning commission's perspective, what obstacles are they facing, uh, or what plans do they have going forward to try to maybe eliminate some things to grow, uh, these, these opportunities? I've asked for them to have conversations and with realtors, maybe have a realtor's forum uh, to where we get all the realtors to come in and sit down and and kind of from their perspective, see what obstacles they're facing. I I like to be able to be educated, to know, you know, what everybody's dealing with here, so we can address it in a manner that it might be a, uh, it might have to go toward the legislators, it might be something that we need to have a conversation with them in regards to what obstacles we do have in play, uh, to be able to overcome to grow this area, in this region. I don't know if a new subdivision that's went in, I can't, I can't tell you when a new subdivision, I know there's a lot of people buying up homes and remodeling them and, uh, selling them or renting them out. Uh, I see a lot of that going on, but I I don't know if any new constructed subdivisions that are going in, and in the the subdivisions that I am aware of, you don't see a lot of building going on in those, uh, areas, and I don't know if it's something that we legally can do to offer some sort of incentive, plan to help, help the housing situation or the housing market uh, to to grow this portion of this, cause it's critical, because that's the return on investment that we're going to get. When these new homes are built, then we get that return on investment from the taxes, and then get them to stay here, live here, spend their money here, and not just drive into the, into the area, and I know that it's gonna be very difficult. I mean, you know, I've been in broadband business for years, you know, a lot of people working from home. Uh, a lot of these companies are starting to see that they don't need the the large buildings and and the, and the infrastructure, and these people can actually do everything they need to do from their inner pajamas.
AT&T, AT&T.
Well, and and that's a, and that's an example of of these conversations that we need to have with these different entities. Uh, to see, you know, what, what conversations we need to be having, or uh, the thought process to to maybe come up with a different idea or different, uh, a plan to to grow our economy in in this area.
Well, and see, that's a good point. See, the building inspector works under us, and all the building spec- especially new construction, and that's, that's an anomaly to us, cause what you will see in single-family homes that are being developed in the county, and I'm going in the Steve's district, will be, you'll see them out at the high school. They're, they're developing homes where the jobs is. Now, where I'm going with this is this. If you go put two new businesses, and board supervisors knows what I'm talking about, on both sides of the county, they're not going to travel back and forth, you, you, you're gonna have to get some development throughout the county, and there has been not a new subdivision in, you know, they're building within the old subdivisions or re- renovation in the old subdivisions, but there has not been a construction of a new subdivision.
All that utilities.
It's in.
Sewer.
Water, sewer, electricity.
Well, I, I, I've read some for you here.
Sewer.
You know, we, in my district, you have people that even spend their money, they go to grants. Uh, they, they'll travel from Sword Creek and Hollister to go to grants, they'll go, people even Belfast there, they go to Claypool Hill. You got people that live down in Castlewood, they go down to shop at, uh, you know, Wise County. They don't, they don't spend a whole lot of money in, uh, in in the area of Russell County, and and I think we, and you know, I mean, the, looking Claypool Hill, how it's grew and in these areas, we've, we've got a, we've got an opportunity, you know, to uh, with the Jonah project, to develop a lot of that properties in in those areas, and up in that area, if we had, uh, the types of infrastructure that 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 is needed, uh, for housing growth and, uh, and and even even large retail box stores uh, to come in and 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 pay the taxes here within the Russell County area, not, and so they don't drive, they don't drive outside the county going to these other areas.
Exactly, exactly. At fifty-seven seventy-eight again. That's, that's the target. Next three years, you'll have them all working here. So, but with that being said, all these things are going to have to be worked with, but the, the good thing is, you don't have to focus on on the county budget. You're going to have to focus on what needs to be done next thirty-six months, next forty-eight months, five, seven years, str- strategic plan. So, that being said, if there's, if there is no more questions, I have to have a motion to pass.
You need a motion to approve the budget. I will make a motion that we approve the twenty-three, twenty-four county-wide budget as presented by Mr. Lester.
Okay, I have a motion, I need a second.
Say.
I have a second from Mr. Ray. Uh, any further discussion?
Please, yes, one more.
All right, one more thing, one more point.
Let's go back to the Wednesdays for the disposal. I'll need that included with us, in a separate motion. The disposal's open to back up on Wednesday.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Yeah, after this one, I'll need a motion.
Let's, let's get the budget passed first. All right, we have a motion to approve the budget as presented by Mr. Lester this evening. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now I'm going to look for another motion to open up.
I will make a motion that we reopen our convenience centers on Wednesday.
We have several, we have a motion, and and everybody is seconding, I think, so that.
I would, uh, I would also, uh, we need hours on that, uh, I would like to see that between, uh, twelve PM and seven PM. And keep our additional hours the same, if we can.
That's up to discretion and order.
I mean, from a budgetary standpoint, will that work?
Okay.
All I'm in, my motion, from what, seven to twelve?
Twelve PM to seven PM.
Twelve PM to seven PM.
And still keep the additional hours Monday too, so, yeah, that's, that's, that's a big, that's a big bonus, yes, absolutely.
Restate the motion that we open them on Wednesday from twelve PM to seven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Breeding, and I have everyone seconding that, including David from his vacation spot in Savannah, Georgia, or South Carolina, and, um, anyway, all in favor? Any opposed?
That's the best we can do.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, next, well, next is the, uh, is the agenda's comment, so, in short.
We have.
Always on that trash business, I had a statement, I've had several people complain to me about the people that work these dumpsters, getting stuff out of them. I don't see a big problem with that, they something now that you think somebody else can use, but I'm getting several complaints from citizens, they don't like the idea of it.
Well, we try as, as far as the man sites, you know, and we have two problems. Well, each one of the site attendants will tell you, if someone's coming in with a washer dryer or a piece of furniture, they'll set it to the side. If, that's the way we do it. That we, we are not going to take for somebody that says, I want to give this away, but, you know, whoever needs it. It's, 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 we do the clothes, we used to do the clothes the same way, right before the pandemic, and then we had to stop that, but we're not going to hinder anything. Only thing that we have a problem with is, if they get in containers and they end up getting hurt with needles, get bit, you know, or or, I mean, there, it was one that jumped in the other time. It was one that jumped in the container, and there was a raccoon in there, and let me assure you, it will come out quick. So, but the point is this, we're, we're not going to, you know, as far as the trash sites.
What we need to do there, I've had several complaints, I'm talking double digits of people in the dumpster while people are coming there, throwing it out. They're cussing them when they throw in trash, they don't know they're there, they're not got a vehicle there, they're dropping these people off. And they're, you know, crawling in the dumpsters, they're going through people's trash, you don't know if they threw away their security number, personal information. You know, they're thinking it's going into that bin, it's going and being discarded. And, uh, you know, and I've had people, I had a lady call me from Cleveland, said that she was up there in line, and one parked his truck, got out, went down the dumpster, and the guy come out, and he cussed him, and you know, there's people in a line trying to get through, and he just held the whole line up. I mean, we need to, you know, get them to call the cops or whatever, or, and I would, I wouldn't care if we got some kind of, uh, I would like to see us purchase something to put on our, uh, site attendants, that they can wire the video uh, when they're at work and leave it there for the next site attendant, at the man sites, and that way, if you have any controvert, uh, you know, with with anybody, you know, it's not a he said, she said, it'll be video recorded of exactly what happened.
Well, we have, and since, and this has gotten more pervasive here in the last few months, and and Mr. Ray will tell you, from all of them, and what have, we have conveyed to the disposal, the site attendants is, and we, we've also actually got it in policy procedure, and we're taking that out and putting it up in all the sites, and we're giving a briefing to them, these are the do's and don'ts in trash sites. You, you know, we don't want to stop anybody from getting that, that chair if they want it, but you can't crawl in the dumpster, you know. There's, there's ways of doing it, and there's ways of not doing it. And, um, they have been, their, their first line is where someone goes in and they, they get, uh, defensive, and they don't want to come out of the container, they're to call us or the sheriff's department, so, that, that will become the standard protocol, so, I, I mean, yeah, cause it, it is legally trespassing, it is, yeah, and that's the way it will be treated, so. Yes.
Alonso, and and this is just me not being that observant, my husband usually takes off the trash, but are there signs at all these locations that that clearly state to do not enter?
Yeah.
Cause I mean, you have to, trespassing is a little strange, you know, it's not just, well, this is our property, this is our rules, you have to give them notice that this is not, that behavior is prohibited.
And that's one of the things that, uh, we're also looking at, and we've talked with Commonwealth Attorney on, we've also went to that point, this is how far this has gone. It, like Katie said, it has to be posted, no trace space and allow them to do not enter after dark. We've got hours and posts and times and cameras, this is going to go up on all of them. Now, the last one that was put in is Finney, and we're completing the, all of the signages on it, and the next one will be Sun, which will have all the signages on it. And it, and it's, it's, it's a group or a handful that's trying this, and they're going to learn the hard way and listen. I hope they're listening, cause you're about to encounter it, because we, we're at the Commonwealth Attorney and notifying the sheriff's department, so, if you're listening, ask for it. If we can, we'll be glad to give it to you. If, if not, do not go in that container.
Because once it goes in that container, it comes Russell County's property.
That is correct, and it comes very dangerous. Like I said, you got glass, you got, you got animals, you got needles in there, you got private information in there, and that's, that's not the way to do business, no.
That private information, so many people complain to me, that's why they're concerned about the, you know, putting, uh, oh, uh, you know, mail stuff in there. I thought, well, surely they're not digging for that, I wouldn't think they'd be digging for that.
They will. They will. What they should do, and if anybody's listening, shred your information, that, just by, go to Walmart and get you a forty-dollar shredder, and as you get it, just zip it through, that's the way it's done, because they are stealing information. You see it on TV all the time, and if there's a way to get it, they're going to try it, so. Uh, we had one that, over at Cleveland, even after the lights went out, he, I mean, we had s- signed cameras, and he crawled under the vents. Yeah. So, other than that, we'll take care of the dumpster divers, and we'll give anybody that does, anything that they want, but uh, the sites are now open, twelve to seven on Wednesday, so that clears that up, and.
Can we get that put in the paper or anything?
That, this is under the new budget, all this will start at first July. Yes, sir. Yep. Any more questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Okay, we're up to new business? Was that our new business? Is everybody happy with that? All right, good. Uh, next, I'm gonna have to call for citizens' comments. I see none, all right, constitutional reports and requests, I see none. County attorney reports and requests. County attorney reports and request.
I don't have anything for this meeting.
Thank you very much. County administrator re- reports and requests.
We heard nothing from him.
He's got a few more things. He's about to speak.
I'm almost done. And this is a thing that y'all did with last time and I went, we went back to review the minutes and everything, this is just a little bit of housekeeping. And this also has a letter from Judge Moore, uh, the Virginia Supreme Court, uh, Declaration of State Holiday on July the third, I need a motion for that. Uh, we, we, we went on to the July tenth scheduling the board meeting, so I need to, just to clean up the housekeeping to make that complete. So I need a motion for July third, twenty twenty-three as a Disney State Holiday.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, I have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, Dave.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we're moving to the resolution supporting a temporary closure of Route six eighty-seven for bridge replacement.
Yes, ma'am. As you can see that I laid on you before the resolution, this has, uh, two components to it. This is a, this was also on the last meeting, this is a reconvened meeting, um, this is a resolution supporting the temporary closure and the right-of-way license for Route six eighty-seven bridge replacement on Roanoke Hill Road. So, it is at the request of Virginia Department of Transportation, close this portion of the road while the bridge is being built and that that automatically triggers where we're going to have to build an alternate route in for public safety, for fire and rescue to get in. And ambulance is to be get in to the residence off of, off of Roanoke Hill. So, it, uh, the second component after the resolution will be is, uh, Katie, as the county attorney, she will be working with the co- uh, us and the nature conservancy to do a right-of-way, uh, licensing with it and then we'll also have one with the contractor. So we'll be one with the nature conservancy and the additional one with the contractor for their responsibilities.
I'm looking at that agreement now, it wasn't something that I felt that I could get approved because the way that it was originally drafted, it was from the nature conservancy to the contractor and so the language is going to have to differ quite a bit. And then also we'll have to work out an agreement between us and the contractor as we're going to be the holder of the temporary license.
Yes, as the, as the governing board. And this resolution will give us no authority to proceed and notification to VDOT and the contractors that we're going with this venue with the right-of-way licensing between us and, and nature conservancy and us and the contractor.
So we don't have a slowdown here?
No, that's great, keep everything on pace.
Okay, that was.
As you can see, also in it, you already had the proposed route, it's already up at that far in design, VDOT is pushing this hard and fast and furious to be able to keep this project on, on, on scale, so. I need, I need a motion for approval.
I'll consider a motion for the resolution supporting this.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Breeding, I need a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, that concludes the county administrator rep- uh, reports and request.
Very good, thank you. At this time, um, I'll have board discussion and reminders. Mr. Lovelace.
Uh, just thanks to the board for reopening the convenience sites on Wednesday.
That's a biggie. Mr. Ray?
Yeah, I'd like to also thank everybody for doing that, it's a much-needed for our trash sites. And also I want everybody to, you know, try to get out and enjoy the fourth in celebration, Cleveland on the third, like Honeakers on the first and Lebanon on the fourth.
Very good. Um, I'm going to call on Mr. Eaton, are you still with us?
Yes, ma'am, and I really appreciate you and the board accepting, you know, this opportunity for me to be able to participate. Uh, being on vacation, on a positive note, I will tell you that, uh, this is what Alonso said, uh, we are trying to gain some, uh, in some areas of, towards, uh, uh, population, I've got three sons, two grandkids, and now you're all up right now, so we're trying to help out the bank that we're
He's too young, David.
You like Jay now, it's.
David, David is too young, every time in the mall.
All right, thank you, David. Uh, Mr. Breeding?
I, I appreciate Alonso and what the work you put into this budget and I appreciate the fact that we're able to open this trash by the fact, this, this trash facility opened up on Wednesday by the fact that we've looked at the economics, we understood, we fixed the budget now, we've had some improvements in the budget, we're able to do it without any financial impact. So, that's all I've got to say.
Ms. D.
No, thank you.
Mr. Christian?
I appreciate the site's been open, that's going to help quite a few people, they say, well, listen, our tax dollars didn't pay for that and we are getting all this inconvenience and yet we want our tax dollars to go to cut out the inconvenience, so I think that's going to please quite a few people when they hear about this.
And on my final note, um, I just want to say happy Fourth of July to all of you guys, I, I wish you the, a, a very wonderful holiday and I do appreciate the fact that we have, uh, stepped into the garbage business very tenderly to see how we can do it the best we can do it, truthfully. And, uh, none of us know anything about garbage, but we sure are learning, so thank you, Mr. Lester, it's been an experience. And at this time, I will adjourn this board to meet again, um, on July tenth, six o'clock here.